Hello, just trying to get some audio if you can hear me if you could enable the audio, please. Thank you. This is Marissa.
Hear us, please.
I know that he heard us during the work session because he sent me a message that he didn't need to make a comment when I asked.
I can hear you guys now.
You can. Marissa, can you hear us? Oh, I don't think she's there anymore.
I can hear you and see you. Yes, this is Josh.
Thank you. Counselor McHugh, can you hear us? Yeah, that's fine. Okay. All right. I'm assuming that they can still hear us, so we're just going to continue on. All right, so we are at the public comment section. If there is someone chiming in online or here in person who would like to make a comment on an item not on the agenda, I don't have the forms in front of me, so I'm... I'm going to recognize you first. If you'd like to come up, say your name and the city of which you reside in. Thank you. And who's ever speaking, just make sure it's right in the microphone so they can hear you. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
It's a whole different world now, isn't it? I'm Carol Sweet, and this is my neighbor and friend, Jordan Lindahl, and we're here to speak about Life Empowered. It's an organization that has served our county for many, many years, but it used to be known as Riverside Training Center. And I just have some brief things. Jordan will introduce himself more later in a minute. But we're here just to talk about just what I found. We have a project going, which is a new building. We have a new scope. We changed from Riverside Training Center to Life Empowered, and the people that we serve are now being able to do more what they want to do and how they want to do it. And we're trying to, it's the new wave of how we treat people with disabilities in the whole country. And I'm so excited that Columbia County is ahead of some of the other places because this is a field I've been in for many years. And we are, we have a whole new scope. And we serve people in the whole county. And one of the questions I get, I'll say to someone, oh, we have this great new project. And they'll say, well, they don't serve Scappus. Why do I care? That's not true. We do. We have a home in Scappus. We have people who work, who live in their own homes but are served by us in Scappus. And I wanted to get the word out because I feel like this is something we should really feel proud about and excited about. And so Jordan and I are just here to talk about, we have a brand new building that we're hoping to build. He's on our campaign committee. He knows more about it than I do. So maybe you could introduce yourself and say why you want this new building.
Hi, I'm Jordan Lindahl. What I want this new building is I help out at Mississauga for 12 years, and I worked at the corn mister, at the corn carpet and out there. And I went to, I was away from Scappus High School in '06. And Life Empowered, what I want Life Empowered is people like me, the disabilities to go and hang out and stuff like that because out here in coming county, you don't have nothing like that here in Oregon, here in Oregon or in coming county.
Thank you, Jordan. He got onto our campaign committee because he knows everybody in town and he has everybody's...
He does.
...info. He said he went to high school with you.
Yeah, we went to school together. Yeah.
Has everybody's info. And so when we say, well, we need to find so and so in Jordan, oh, I know that person. And he does it, which is, it's great. But one of the reasons that I got connected to this was because I'm friends with Jordan and his mother and father. And we live up in the hills. We're the hill people. But we also, we're much more refined now.
We're more civilized.
We used to make a lot of fun of the hill people, but not anymore. But is that there isn't a place for someone like Jordan who's gone to school here all his life. He's lived here all his life, and he can't meet people that he wants to interact with. And this new building is very exciting because it's going to have a fully accessible kitchen so we can have cooking classes. It's going to have places for people to take classes if they have an interest, maybe a workout place for the staff. And it's, what we have now is an old pole building that has seen its last days. I think it's older than I am. That's very old. And this is going to be a project that will take a couple of years, but I think we'll do it. We've had some good news from the feds lately that they are backing our planning thing. And we're hoping that everybody will get behind us and support it. And I have some flyers here that are just talk about our new program and what we do. And I'll just bring those down to you. And I just, you know, we're very excited and we want, we want Scappus to be a part of it. I've lived here a long time, and I thought everybody knew, but they didn't. And we have some clients that, when I saw, see the old building, they were like, this reminds me of when we had to go sit at a table and assemble things. And then somebody'd unassemble them at the end of the other old building, old table. And this is new. This is the new scope in everything. And I also want to point out, we had some issues with one of the other organizations about, well, you're a nonprofit, so why would we care about helping you? And so we're the second largest employer in the county when we're in full employment. And that makes a huge difference. And we still pay the same money as anybody else, you know, same taxes. So why to put a group down because it's a nonprofit is ridiculous, as they say, my grandkids say. Anyway, so if you have any questions, we just wanted to let you know that this thing is underway. We will be out, we'll be doing some tours. We'll be taking people through the old building and talking about what the new one's going to look like. And Cindy Stockton, who's our director, sitting back here, just in case I got in trouble and did, I'm on the board. What do I know? But I just wanted to bring you, we wanted to bring you up to date on this because we think it's important and it means a lot to our community.
Carol, just for those that, you know, don't have this information in front of them, and I'm not even necessarily finding it in front of me, where can people go in terms of a website or something to learn how to become more involved or help out?
Go ahead, Cindy.
You do.
Hi, thank you.
Of course.
You can go to our website, which is www.lifeemp.org, L-I-F-E-M-P dot org, just one E. And we have a whole section of our website dedicated specifically to this Capitol Campaign. It's called the Empowerment Center is what we're hoping to build. It was part of our, the setting up that part of the website was part of the grant requirement for federal funding, which Senators Wyden and Merkley have included us for $500,000 of planning money. City of St. Helens has signed on to support us. They will run a Community Development Block Grant for us as additional funding, and then we'll continue with foundation grants. I think it's important for people to understand that this project is being funded almost entirety by grants. It is not taxpayer dollars per se. It is not our service dollars. It is all, is all foundation and federal state grants.
We have hit the time on public comment for this unless there's any last final comments from counselors or questions.
I just wanted to see the location. You said you have a place, but then you're looking for a build under the place.
Yeah, our current, our current office building is located at 105 Port Avenue in St. Helens. And we recently acquired the land from the port of Columbia County. So we will raise that building and redo new construction on that site.
Thank you.
Just want to make sure it's really clear what you do. Just really quickly in the summary, can you just go over what exactly your organization does?
We support 24 hours, provide 24 hour supports to adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities in the county. We've been here for 50 years. So residential supports, employment supports, skill building, anything people need.
What the goal is to enable...
We need, we want to build a new site. It's going to be multi-purpose. Initially, it will be for only the people we support that meet the requirements of many of the grants. But skill building, training, independence, socialization, the different components that we all enjoy. But in a local capacity, our administrative offices will be housed there. But it also meets part of our administrative rule requirements for emergency evacuation. And then ultimately, after five years, which is a requirement of the Community Development Block Grant, we want to open it up to the public as a meeting space or whatever the community needs.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, I think that's it. Thank you. And when we have the social events, Jordan will be leading them. That's going to be his new job.
Thank you very much, Jordan, for coming out.
Thanks, Jordan.
Thank you, Carol. Thank you.
Hi, welcome. Just state your name and city of residence for the record, please.
My name is Kat Balo, and I am a member of the Scappus community.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. So I'll just take about four minutes of your time. So I have approximately 30 years of experience volunteering with county animal shelters and nonprofit rescue groups. So obviously, I care very much about the humane treatment of animals. And I'm here today to ask you to introduce and pass a city ordinance to prohibit the sale of puppies and kittens in Scappus pet stores. The goal of this ordinance is to ensure that kittens and puppies from puppy mills or backyard breeders are not sold in Scappus pet stores. Thankfully, no stores in Scappus currently sell cats or dogs. From what I understand, only a couple of Oregon pet stores still sell puppies and kittens because many pet stores partner with nonprofit groups or county animal shelters to adopt out cats and dogs. And the reason why I'm asking for this ordinance is because Oregon is the only market left open in the West Coast to puppy selling pet stores since the states of Washington and California have enacted laws prohibiting them. 440 municipalities across the U.S. have enacted ordinances banning such sales. For example, in 2020, Olympia, Washington City Council unanimously approved an ordinance when the infamous puppy milling, puppy selling pet store chain Puppy Land sought to locate there. Puppy selling pet stores are looking to move to other states because of the passage of these types of humane pet store laws. Puppy Land has already filed for a business license in Oregon, and Scappus would be a logical place for such a store to open on the West Coast. That is why I am asking that we be proactive. Most puppy selling pet stores source their puppies either from large scale commercial breeders, i.e. puppy mills, or local backyard breeders, encouraging inexperienced people to breed dogs for profit. Conditions of both the puppy mills and pet stores themselves often lack socialization, exercise, nutrition, medical attention, and care. Animals continue to suffer in puppy mills because customers do not do their research before they buy their pet and are often ignorant on the cruel conditions. Pet store employees paint a picture of their puppies frolicking in the green grass, but as we know, this is often reality. Reputable breeders would never sell their puppies in pet stores because they demand to meet prospective buyers in person. Most breed clubs consider it a violation of their code of ethics to sell their puppies at pet stores. The AKC itself states that it is important for the public to visit a breeder's home, see at least one of the parents, make sure the site is clean, and that their dogs are healthy. None of this is possible if an animal is sold in a store. My recent phone call to Critter Cabana, a pet store in Newburgh, is a good example demonstrating this. They are currently selling Shih Tzu puppies for $2,500. When I called to inquire, the staff would not tell me where their puppies were from, and they did admit that none of them were AKC registered. $2,500. Either federal nor state laws protect breeding dogs or puppies from the puppy mill pipeline. USDA standards are merely survival standards with minimal enforcement. Oregon law regulates commercial breeders but remains silent on pet store sourcing. My understanding is that the Oregon Legislature may take up the issue if municipalities demonstrate support. And I am asking for your help in demonstrating the support and taking this proactive measure to keep Puppy Land or other puppy mill selling stores from operating in Scappus. In closing, I appreciate the opportunity to request a proactive ordinance to prohibit the sale of dog and cats in pet stores. Residents would still be able to obtain the pet store, pet of their choice by adopting from a shelter, rescue, or responsible breeder who sells directly to the public. I can provide a model ordinance prepared by the Humane Society of the United States. So please let me know if there's any research I can do or if I can help you in any way. And if I do not have the answers, I am happy to do the research. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Any questions?
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Nobody online?
Correct. Not that I know of.
Is there anyone online who would like to make a public comment on an item not on tonight's agenda? All right. Yeah. Seeing none, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. July 18th work session and city council minutes. There a motion? Motion made by Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Santiago. Any discussion? All those in favor state by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Right, old business. Yes. Counselor Polling or Counselor McHugh, are you able to approve the minutes?
Yes.
Yes, approved.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Miller. All right, old business. Ordinance number 903 and ordinance amending Scappus Municipal Code Title 8, adding Section 8.20.150 Noise Variance Permit and Application. This will be presented by Assistant to the City Manager Isaac Betman. This is on second reading tonight.
Mayor and counsel, we just made two brief changes. One was requested directly by Tyler Miller to have the city notice via social media when I permits proofed. The second one, we noticed that there was some confusion about the purpose. And to my reading, as a technocrat, I understood that mean public interest. So we just made it more clear that we're actually after public interest. So we added one more clause. That would be E under Section B today. Any further questions?
Counselor Polling or McHugh, if you have any questions, feel free to share.
Thank you. No questions.
Nothing for me as well.
Do we have a motion?
Counselor President.
Yes, Counselor Lasowski.
Recommend counsel approve ordinance number 903 and ordinance amending Scappus Municipal Code Title 8, adding Section 8.20.150 Noise Variance Permit and Application as written.
Motion made by Counselor Lasowski. Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Miller. Any discussion?
I appreciate city staff bringing this to our attention as an opportunity for us to be more mindful of the broader community, especially as we look to host more events and bring in more longer evening opportunities for folks to stay in Scappus and enjoy our community. So I think this is a good step in the right direction. Thank you.
All right, all those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Counselor Polling? Great, thank you. Opposed? Motion carries. New business. Contract approval, Parks Master Plan Comprehensive Update. Public Works Director Dave Sukow.
Yeah, Counsel President and Counsel, good evening. So counsel goal 4.1 for the 2223 fiscal year is to update the Parks Master Plan. Kicking that off, staff issued a request for proposals in June. We received two on July 11th, one from MIG Incorporated, one from Conservation Techniques. Both of their proposals were reviewed, interviews were made, and at the end of it, MIG Incorporated scored the highest. And at this point, we're just seeking counsel's approval to enter into contract with MIG to complete the Parks Master Plan update.
Is there a estimated timeframe that they gave on when they could not only start, but how long they first saw it to take?
They did. They have a timeline that will complete by June of next year.
Counselor McHugh?
Yeah, I have a question. I see how much is budgeted for this. Do we, have they given us an amount for their proposal? Or are we still waiting for that?
They did. It was $100,000.
Oh, they just budgeted what the maximum was then. Okay.
There's something, yes.
Okay, I guess I have a question regard, how is the Park and Rec Committee going to be involved with this?
There will be, I believe, at the next council meeting, there's a work session.
Sorry.
Counselor McHugh, they're the technical advisory committee for the project. So essentially, almost every single committee meeting they have between now and June will more or less be dedicated to this project.
Okay. Where does the Park and Rec Committee fit in with that?
They are. They are the technical advisory committee. So every month at their meeting, they will be working on this project.
Okay, okay. So that was my question because I think they need to be our driving force behind this. And, and, you know, the last, you know, master plan we did, we did it with, you know, basically volunteer helps. And we did it with, you know, an intern. And it probably wasn't what people thought it should be, but at the time, it seemed like it was pretty good. How is this going to be different than what we did at that time?
I mean, I would venture to say this is going to be considerably different with respect to, you know, we're going to have an engineering team on board that when it comes to putting together the capital improvement plan, will have a much more detailed scope and idea of what the designs will be and costs that will be far more accurate. We did the best we could, you know, it's no one's fault. But we had an intern putting together those cost estimates as opposed to an engineering team. So I think this is going to be significantly different and give us a lot more information.
Yeah, that's my question. Yeah, I want to know what it is that we're going to get for our money here. And so this will take about a little less than a year to complete, sounds like. And the, and the Park and Rec Committee will be directly involved with this. And they will be kind of the, and the community at large, too. I know there'll probably be some surveys and that kind of thing. But I just think it's real important that, and I'm sure everybody agrees with me, that the Park and Rec Committee be, you know, highly involved with this. And when it's all said and done, they feel like they've been, you know, consulted properly for the end result.
So this is Counselor Miller. So the engineering firm, that's what the RFP was for. And we're establishing right now if we're going to award that RFP to MIG, correct? And the engineering firm is going to interface with the Parks and Rec Committee over several meetings.
Yes.
Bring back basically their recommendation, counsel.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor McHugh, did you have any other questions?
No, I think, I think that's it. I appreciate the answers. Thank you.
Of course. Thank you. Any other questions?
Liaison, I'm just up at that. Forward to it. Yeah. So with that...
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I moved that council authorized city manager reins to enter into a contract with MIG and to complete the Parks Master Plan Comprehensive Update.
Motion being by Counselor Santiago. Is there a second?
Clarifying question before a second. Is it standard that we would put in language in the contract with MIG, does not exceed 100,000, not approval, coming back, right? I would only imagine that that 100,000 is actually a fairly low cost for such a large plan that we are asking for. So I feel very confident that this dollars are going to not only support the city's parks plan, but that will also support our master plan. So therefore, when we go and seek additional grants, that we have all of the plans in place so that we can be competitive in those processes, so that we can invest not just our tax dollars, but that we are also utilizing other resources. So with that being in place, I... So with that being in place, I do second this motion.
Seconded by Councilor Lesowski. Any discussion? Council Miller?
Just to, sorry to kind of rehash this and go back. Just to clarify, kind of piggyback on Council McHugh's question. Clarification on the record, the RFP had the requirements of everything that the engineering firm needed to complete, correct?
It did. And since this was a qualifications based procurement, the dollar amount was not included. They would have gone to the budget and found the budgeted amount. It was not because we would have advertised, you know, necessarily that amount. So this is all based on their qualifications as an engineering team to do this work.
Okay. That's, okay. I will add that in reviewing of proposals on other projects and work done, this dollar amount falls in line with what is standard for these plans. If anything, they dialed it back to meet our budget, I would suggest, so. The reason I asked that question was because Council McHugh asked, what are we getting for, you know, that money? So assuming that was all part of the RFP.
Correct. Yes.
Okay, thanks.
All right, all those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item number four, Park Status Update. Public Works Director Dave Sukow.
Yeah, everybody loves parks, discussing parks, right?
Do.
So we wanted to take this opportunity just to bring you guys up to speed with where we are. I'm sure the council gets lots of questions out in the field and we figured we better get you with where we're thinking. And so tonight, we're just going to talk about the parks, which ones we have, what green spaces we're taking care of, what the budget's looking like for this year, staffing levels and notes, and then just some of our goals, both short and long term. And please, as always with me in a work session, if you've got a question, just grab it. Don't wait till the end of that time. We'll be fine. So moving to the next slide, as you know, our parks Heritage, Veterans, Miller, Chief Concomly, Creekview, Chapman and Turtech Trailhead are currently established as parks with restrooms and such amenities, properties that the city staff is.
To clarify, they're not all equipped with restroom.
They do not all have, but they have.
They have.
Trash cans or whatever that we acknowledge, just.
Just wanted to make sure.
They can be in house, yes. Correct. Properties that the Parks Department is maintaining though is the entire corridor along the highway and the railroad tracks, about 10 and a half acres there. The Bella Vista parcel while owned by the Water Department is used as a park. Obviously, people trail, hike up there and things, and the Parks Department does maintain it. Matter of fact, this past week, we've been up there mowing and clearing those trails. Um, the Grabhorn Parcel, as everybody knows, is now on the list. The CZ Trail, Highway 32, Chapman Landing is maintained by our folks. Uh, the Totem Pole is maintained by our folks in conjunction with the Community Club, gardening clubs. Appreciate their help on that. The Peace Candle will be coming into our inventory and is actively being restored right now. Painting will be at the end of the month. Electrical work is being done as we speak. The apartments are completing their portion of the parking lot. So everything is hopefully aligning. The only thing that we're a little hung up on is the wick. We're still waiting to get a status update on getting that rehabbed. It may come in a little bit later in the game. Um, and then the Air Park Parcel out at the new air development, we have not actually done anything with that, but it is coming into our inventory. It's something that we'll maintain and offer to the public in the near future. And then obviously, the facility around here is also maintained by the Parks Department. Questions on any of those? Uh, budget for the year, this is basically just a snapshot out of the budget book. Personal services for the year is 278,000, materials and services at 145, give or take, obviously. Capital is budgeted at 250 for the year and transfers of 21,000, giving a total budget of 695,393. Um, notes that I wanted to draw attention to out of this. For the personnel services, this equates to 2.02 FTEs for the city, full-time employees. Of that, 1.6 equates to actual utility worker, parks workers around the field. And 0.42 is for administrative, city manager, myself, finance administrator, et cetera, at City Hall to administer that fund. And then if you add up the total acreage of what I previously listed, it equates to about 166 acres, which divided by that 1.6 person is about 100 acres per person to try to maintain. Host homes, about 5,000 square feet of yard to take care of. So it's, it's a big task. Um, and it does, it does require more than those workers from time to time. City Works is a team and we all kind of jump in where we need to be. There's a big event coming as such as the 100 year. It was all hands on deck just to try to get ready for that. But right now, that's the only way we can maintain a level of service that's expected in this community. Um, materials and services, this is kind of self-explanatory. This is the boards and nails and things that we use. It is also some contractual money for different services that we may hire. Should there be a repair to a facility that's outside of our zone, we would hire a contractor or such. Um, capital for this year, $140,000 in park improvements. 50,000 is allocated to the peace candle restoration. 50,000 was allocated to a Parks Department vehicle. We have purchased that vehicle and actually came in around 40, so we've saved 10,000 there. Um, and then 10,000 is budgeted for asset management, which the city is getting ready to move forward in the next couple of months. Will be for all departments, water, wastewater, everybody, all their equipment, facilities. Everything will start getting tracked in electronic fashion, which will be very useful for generations to come for the city. We're trying to line it up with somebody who is here to stay. City Works is supported by Trimble, owned by Trimble actually. And that is who we use for our GIS services as well. So it all partners very well, and I think it'd be good for future generations, like I said. Questions on any budget?
I'm excited to get an update on these improvements.
All right, yeah, this is the fun stuff. So this is hopefully in the next year or two. Obviously, we're ambitious, like everybody. Love to see as much stuff get done as possible. As everybody knows, we just approved the Parks Master Plan update. So that's one thing that'll get done during this year. The vehicle was purchased, candle rehab will get done this year, the asset management will get done this year. Paving at Chapman Landing is for the portion down at the tail end. You'll notice going over the dyke, there's some gravel. Parts of the path, we want to pave that so that it's just more bicycle, wheelchair friendly, whatever, just to get through those sections. Seating, we're working on new benches. We have recently acquired four wooden benches that are going to go along the CZ Trail. Those will be installed in the next few weeks. Uh, we have a couple that have been donated, one out on the trail, one at Creekview. And then as needed, we're buying more where we see fit for the parks. We're hoping to build an additional shelter at Miller Park, similar to the one that's there right now. When there's parties, there's just not enough shade. As you probably noticed, we planted some trees down there too, that we're hoping in future give people some places to hide away from the sun, especially when you're watching your children. It's rather warm during the summertime, so. And at Miller Park, we're also at some point want to get some concrete pathways into those amenities to be more ADA compliant, inter-friendly, so that you're not walking through the swampy grass during the rainy season and things. We are going to mimic what's in the Parks Master Plan currently. If you look in there, there's kind of like a little island in between all of the amenities. We want to maybe have like some sort of a tree similar to what's in front of the library and just be able to have pathways that break off to all of the amenities and then tie into the restrooms and possibly have like a pet walk behind the restroom or something we're kind of thinking about.
Ten things that would come up in this Parks Master Plan update. Yeah, totally. Thank you.
Um, playground enhancement at Veterans. Currently, Alex and I have been looking at a zip line, a 53 foot zip line that we would put at Veterans Park, right below the play structures where they currently are. It could be super cool for the older kids to have something like that to use there. So that's, that's what we're getting designed right now. We're starting to pick colors and just kind of get something put together and get a package figured out. It's looking like it's going to be somewhere in the 25 to 30,000 dollar range once all of the site work is done. All in all, compared to other amenities, that seems on par for what it is. So we're just trying to make those playgrounds more exciting for the kids and want to go or and kind of have each park have a theme. So it draws you to the different ones when you want to go see something different. So you don't just get stuck in that same thing, but it's obviously somebody's choice. Fitness equipment is another thing we've looked at. You've probably seen those outdoor exercise machines. It is our goal to try to get some of those along the trail as we do enhancements to that so that maybe every half mile or quarter mile or some sort of a different machine, people can do some exercise with. Dog park improvements, that's not excessive. We want to put in possibly like a dog wash. So when they come out of the park and they got their muddy paws, we'll create some sort of a concrete basin with a hose available to people, wash their dogs down rather than tracking the mud home with them. And we're going to try to do some new seating up there. We put in a temporary gate so that we can close half of the park, fence it off, do some re-establishment of the lawn seed. And once that's back, then we can switch. So it will be a little condensed for people to use during that interim. But for, you know, a month or so, it'd be worth it in the long haul. Because if by winter we can get that back, then it won't be quite so muddy. I don't know if any of you have been there, but it gets pretty swampy in the winter time up there. Tables, we have already purchased them. We're just trying to get them installed. The parks right now, we've bought a couple blue ones that will be going down to Miller to go with that theme. Some of those tables will get transferred out to Chapman Landing. Just add as needed. Questions? That's the bulk of the short-term stuff. And obviously, open, open ears to anything anybody else has ideas on.
Council Santiago?
Um, first, maybe the zip line is a, is a, the answer to crossing over.
Yeah. The connection between Chief Concomly and.
My question is on the seating. You mentioned that the points is adding seating in our parks. Mentioned wood. I'm just, have you guys considered like concrete or some kind of, instead of wood?
The theory behind the wood is that if they get damaged, stolen or whatever, we're not out a lot of money. These are costing us about $200 apiece. We tried them out at Chapman Landing and it seemed to be working well. People aren't damaging, but it's kind of a test just to know what kind of vandalism we're going to see in the future. Once the vision, if you will, is established, then like if you were to look in Heritage Park, you'll see that there's a common theme on those benches. Once that is established, that would be what we would move forward with. Like this is just a temporary, let's see how it goes. There's a few wood ones that were put out there by some Boy Scouts several years ago. We're trying to just kind of stay with that and give that nature wood right now. I've been going with the concrete. It's not to stay in the future though, that that will, where it'll go.
The blue benches are made out of what?
The blue picnic tables that will be going to Miller are steel. Steel with a coating, epoxy coating on them.
And so I was thinking either steel or concrete, but
Council Polling?
I just had two comments. One, I do like the, you know, the ideas of coming up with some new ideas and new and variety in our play areas. But number two, I just want to thank you and your team for all the hard work. All of our areas always look really good, especially with how limited staff you are. So I just wanted to say thank you and we appreciate you.
Thank you. The one thing I do want to say in regards to the looks of our parks, unfortunately, you'll notice they're probably a little more brown than we would like. With our issue with the Keys Water Plant this year, we did have to dial back on our water a little bit to conserve. And so we got that project done or they're back on and will be fully established and great here soon. But it was something that unfortunately does, it did a little bit in our pride too, because we do want to keep this green and lush for everybody, but. Questions on short-term?
Council McHugh, I'll get to you in a minute. Council Lesowski is next. Go ahead.
So Dave, I'd be curious, I see this at some city parks, not here in Scapoose, but that they will have dedication plates honoring someone, maybe a particular community member. Maybe it's a, a family member that is no longer with the, within the community. Has there ever been any programs that we could maybe emulate to offer that for benches? You know, you talk about putting in exercise equipment along CZ. If there was a gym locally that wanted to sponsor a piece of equipment or something along those lines. Has there ever been programs that you're aware of?
There's no program per se, but we have had several people step forward and do that. Some of the benches that are actually in Heritage have been donated in people's name. And there's a plaque that comes from the manufacturer with the benches. We're actually involved in that.
Yes, so we, there are several at Heritage Park that have that. There's also a bench on the CZ Trail, I believe, that has a plaque, correct? And then there's actually another bench at Chief Concomly Park also that I believe has a plaque. So typically, people have approached us and said, you know, hey, can you help us with this? In which case, we'll turn around and we'll say, okay, you know, to match the furnishings in the park, it'll cost this amount, it'll look like this, and then we can fit XYZ on the plaque. And then for instance, also to the floral arrangement by the door, it actually has a plaque on it for Kathy, who was our former municipal clerk. So, yeah, we actually have seen this quite a bit. It's just usually people are, are coming to us and asking for it. I think probably also because they're noticing it at other parks that they're there.
And I'm not saying that this needs to be solved today by any means, but maybe there needs to be, if there could be a formalized process that we keep in mind moving forward, just to take kind of the burden off city staff if somebody comes and that there's consistency in how we approach folks that come to the city with that request. But all great information. Thank you for the response.
Yeah, most of the time, somebody has a specific location that they're targeting. So if it is one that has a vision, as Alex said, we would, we would suggest that particular bench should not change the atmosphere or the look of the particular parks, so.
We've also been open though to other styles in different areas, depending on what they decide to. So there are certainly benches with plaques on them that aren't, don't look all the same that are spread around the different parks.
Council McHugh?
Yeah, I just wanted to say two things. I was going to ask about the benches and tables and memory of different people and that kind of thing. But I, I think if there's a way we can get that word out to the community, we could. Now, we don't want to make this bigger than what we can handle too. I guess that's another issue we should look at. But I, I do think that there is a quote unquote market for doing something like that because I think there are people who like to have loved ones remembered in a more permanent sort of way. And the ones we have already, I think, are very, have been done very tastefully. And, but the main thing I wanted to say is that, Dave, you and your park people and Tim, et cetera, all the guys do a great job and with our parks. And I just really appreciate what you do because I know you do it with a limited budget. And I think we've come a long ways with parks. And it's a lot of that is, is thanks to our, our park department. If we really have one, do we, but it park people. Anyway, it, it all is good. Kudos to you guys.
Thank you.
Steve, I have one thing on, on here before you flip the page. Um, it just kind of got my attention when I'm seeing things about paving at Chapman Landing or, you know, things happening on CZ Trail. And I've heard from quite a few people on the opposite side of the highway, which I think is county.
It is correct.
It's in their jurisdiction. How do we? How do we share our vision for that space in terms of blackberry bushes? Making sure that the blackberry bushes are cleared by our welcome to Scapoose population sign? That maybe instead of gravel with potholes off of the crosswalk there across Vernonia? You know, like, how do we make that a space that's more accessible and safe to get onto the trail for?
Well, I obviously can't speak on behalf of their budget and staffing levels to maintain that trail. I do know there are private organizations that are, you know, little community groups that are working to try to help that portion of the trail. As far as the look, the county has their look. They have a unified vision, one end to the other. Their kiosks are the same, their signs are the same. Everything's kind of similar. And when they approached us a couple of years ago and wanted to kind of expand into our zone, they were open to it in a partnership fashion, if you will. The Turtech Trailhead had already been moved forward with a grant, picking the amenities that were there, the colors that were there. It didn't align. So we said, well, here, we kind of want to stay on our own. Down at Chapman, we did tell them they're more than welcome to put in one of their kiosks. That was nearly two years ago. Gave them the green light. They haven't done it yet. So I don't know if that speaks to their staffing levels or what. We, we have talked with Casey and Riley on multiple occasions. Matter of fact, we even talked about educational signs and things that would be waist-high as you walk the trail so they're not necessarily obscuring your view, but you could stand, I'm sure you've all seen those information. Where you could stand and read something about a historical site while you look at it and look out into the field and remember, because I believe there was a Turtech Homestead that was in the vicinity of the Turtech, just slightly east of there. Different little things. The county has a ton of that information. It's just, I guess, getting, getting that rolling and.
It's just, it's, it's right there off the highway, right at that four-way stop, just making that entrance. Entrance to the trail on that side of the highway, a little more appealing. But again, I guess we just have to be patient or.
There's two options. We could, you know, reach out and just try to poke them and then just see if we can get them motivated to do something. I did see a mower there. The last couple of months. I don't know what we were able to accomplish. The other thing I mean, would be using our resources to do that, but I'm not sure that that's something we want to do or not.
Sure.
With what our current workload is, but. I do share your concerns.
Thank you.
Dave, may I ask you a question really quick? So just to clarify, we are open to the kiosk design that the county is using at Chapman Landing?
Absolutely.
Okay.
All until, yeah, that was conditional though. We did tell them if some point the city. Fully develops out that park and that vision changes, that that may go away. We did kind of give them a little. Claws, but in the meantime, absolutely. And, and we know that's years away before we get to that stage. So. It would definitely be worth their efforts. I think there would be plenty of use out of it.
Okay. I need to talk to Casey about an unrelated matter, um, coming up. So I'll mention that. So poke them a little bit about.
I've had someone in the emergency services, um, mention something to me just about. Just a lot of that gravel in the potholes and getting people across through the crosswalk and then safely onto.
Talking about the gravel. Lot that's here at this section.
Yeah.
And they did bring in some recycled asphalt and kind of graded that out somewhat recently. I haven't been over there since that's been completed. I don't. Assume it improved it, but I don't know what it looks like. Good for short term?
Pete, your hand is still up. Do you have something? Oh, no, no, you're okay. I just didn't want to miss you.
Just forgot. Thank you.
Then I think the long term, um, speaks for itself for what most of these are. We know these are projects that we're trying to do Grabhorn, Chapman Landing, Bella Vista. Grabhorn, obviously the concept of that is in the works right as we speak. Chapman has been kind of postponed with the complexities and things that are there. And we'll get to it probably after Grabhorn's completed, I would guess. That'll be under your direction. Bella Vista, we've had several work sessions over the past few years. Some trail alliances have looked at it and proposed some different plans. But nothing's ever actually initiated to get that moving. So. We would need the funding to go along with it. And right now we're just not in that position. Uh, Creekview is a diamond in the rough. Uh, I think it would be great to possibly put in a small parking lot or something, just to allow people to get off the street. Right now for people who utilize it, have to block somebody's home other than there's about three sites worth in front of it. Um, and then the air park, uh, that's an unknown. There's been talks from soccer fields to disc golf, to all kinds of opportunities down there, I think. And it's just going to be a great green space. It's very peaceful to watch the birds and things. See what that vision ends up being. Um, and obviously pocket parks, we're always looking for little parcels to develop pocket parks. Alex and I actually pitched a proposal to the Columbia River PUD to build a small one in the backside of the substation. We're here by Sawyer and they were very open to that. Unfortunately, right now the zoning for that property won't allow it. So we would have some hurdles to jump through to make that happen, but. Something to consider. And obviously there's other little parcels throughout the area that maybe someday the city might be able to acquire and build those. So.
When are you able to hire more people?
I wish I had an answer.
Wish we could, yeah. Magic wand and money trees everywhere.
Um, and that is ultimately it, other than additional questions, but that's kind of where we're at for the year. I think the master plan is going to give us direction moving forward for the bigger. Projects. Um, and then meantime, we'll continue to enhance. Obviously there's far more going on than I even touched on there. Watts House, we've been doing a lot of work with the Historical Society over the past couple of years. We've painted the house and had a roof. Right now we're over there removing a bunch of the wires that aren't used anymore for communications in the basement. They're working really hard to put in all new cabinetry and lay that all out differently. And then we'll upgrade the lighting for the museum. So yeah, lots of different things going on throughout the city, but. Uh, as you're aware of, Scapoo's Bay Watershed is working along the creek, doing enhancements there. We've been working with them. Quite a bit to establish that, keep those plants watered and things. So. Were able to do some work at the ball fields, um, right before the tournament, got some paving done and, and some things and got the fields filled in and looking better. Heard with the league on that. Friends, but we enjoy it. So.
So the dedication. Leadership.
Take support.
All right. I'm not seeing any questions from other counselors. So with that, we will move on to item number five. Southwest Maple Street School Zone Sidewalk Safety Improvements. Public Works Director Dave Sukow.
Another very exciting opportunity in my opinion. Few months ago, at one of our traffic safety committee meetings, a concern came into us about the crossing on Southwest First and Maple. Which is behind the US Bank to the north side of the school. Um, upon evaluating that, we identified some great potential there to do some improvements. There's an apartment. Porplex being built just west of that intersection that is going to be putting in a small component of sidewalk. And we thought it'd be a great time to maybe, um. Project of our own to reconfigure the intersection. Tie in from the property to the north of that stretch. So it'd be one lot worth. There's a diagram in your packets, but, um, so you'd have a hundred and some feet going south along First Street and then turning west. Down to an existing section that's, um. About a block and a half down. And what we're seeking is the council's approval to possibly move forward with this project. This is not something that's been discussed before or identified. It was not in the gas tax, uh, fuel tax proposals. Um, we, in fact, we did a work session with you here, I think six, eight months ago, I don't remember. Where we kind of talked about these projects and it was the direction to stay the course with moving. To the school zone over by the Fifth and Vine and Third Place Projects. And so this would be possibly getting, jumping ahead of that because it's. We think is a little more low hanging fruit, if you will. It's more affordable. It's quick to get some boots on the ground and get some improvements made. And, uh, that's really where we're at is we're just seeking if this is something that council. Is willing to allow us to move forward or not.
You put that.
I touch on that? Okay.
You not put the diagram up? No.
Dave, I'm, I understand this correctly, that. There's 30,000 and then the construction estimate range is 120 to 170 project.
Sorry, what was that?
My understanding is correctly on the, uh. 33, sorry, I don't have my binder, so my pages are a little bit obulated here. Um, so the, the cost is 30. $3,000 and then the construction range is 120 to 170.
That's correct.
Can you remind me what the cost was for Old Portland Road?
Uh, we were hovering just under 500 when that was complete.
And that originally was one of those projects where it was like more bang for our buck. That was, you know, we could do these little fill-ins along the way and. ADA accessibility on the corners. Um.
In, in conjunction with school, we're trying to target collectors, trying to target where the people are. Um, the other thing that in my personal, I'd like to get going is some work on JP West. From the highway down to the bridge. I think that's another.
Inviting people to our parks with no sidewalk. Yeah.
Exactly.
I agree. Um. I, sorry, no, you go ahead. Just because I have the gavel, doesn't mean I have to be the first one to talk.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, Dave, I, I'm in full support of this request. I think that, you know, council over the years has indicated, you know, our schools, safe zone. Uh, creating safe routes to schools has been something that's been on our, you know, agenda, on our, uh, radar. I think that you've also brought this to our attention at a time as. Built the lot had been developed out now. And so we see this opportunity for continuity within the walkway. I also drop my kids off over there in the mornings for their school bus. There are plenty of vehicles that are parked on the side of the road along that area. So I think that there's, uh, you know, sidewalks create safety barriers between, uh, the properties and the, uh, and the roadways. So, um, I, I feel that this is, uh, a value and I appreciate the foresight that city staff of bringing this to council at this time. Thank you.
Counselor Santiago?
So just for those who don't have a diagram and just to clarify with you, Dave.
I think Isaac put it up so everybody can see.
Okay. So it's the, um, the red section is already going to be developed by developer. And then we, you're just proposing to fill.
That is.
Right?
And that is correct. We think in blue as well. We would be building.
Okay.
Wouldn't end up with floating piece of sidewalk. We would actually make.
Yeah. And that, and that red, yeah, that red is going to happen.
The red, otherwise that red piece. Just be alone by itself.
Right, right.
Only cover their frontage and not connect.
Right. But this is going to be an even.
With the blue, then it, everything will connect.
Okay. That's just why, I didn't, I didn't know he had that up. Sorry.
I didn't.
Did I clarify?
I've been ducking.
Counselor Miller?
So I'm in full support of this. I think we've talked previously about the concept of starting close to schools and expanding out with sidewalk repair. Um, project. So since this is, if I heard you correctly, this is not, would not be part of the fuel tax.
No, it would. This, this is a perfect candidate for, for those projects.
Oh, well, okay then.
Just wasn't on our list because we didn't see, you know.
So we didn't realize this was an opportunity.
At the last time we presented, this wasn't on our radar yet.
Hey, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Counselor Pauling?
Yeah, I just had one question. So would there be any reduction already, uh? By doing this project with, in combination with the, uh, the development in cost?
No, the, the developer of that is building this regardless, um, on his own. And will be done long before we get there. They're, they're moving right along with that project. And I imagine to see that portion of sidewalk. Probably within the next two months or I guess.
All right. Well, that being said, either way, I am in, uh, favor of it just as, this was a thought.
Brings up a question though. What would be your timeline on this?
We're prepared to bring on an engineer, um, right away. We've already been reaching out to get some scopes so that we had some idea of what costs might be. And so, um, we've got those proposals ready to evaluate who we would choose.
Dave, just to clarify, concrete work usually doesn't, uh, take place until the drier months. Am I right? I mean, here in Oregon, we try to do it at any time. I get it. We, but you want to try to do it maybe like May, June, July, that timeframe?
This is a project that could actually go to bid. The next two months probably. And we could hopefully maybe have it in before Christmas. If not, we would probably lay over to winter, but. Concrete you can get away with in the winter. You just don't pour in the rain or the freezing temperatures. So it, it is allowed to, you know, kind of get, it's the paving that becomes more challenging than concrete work.
We know that.
And I think just for the public for record, like it is required by anyone doing new developments in the city. They have to be putting in sidewalk frontage. So. This is. This is a way for us to just make it seamless and, um. Why we have the fuel tax and I think it's a great, um. In my opinion, a great spot. And I, I do appreciate you, Dave. Um, always being willing to help us pivot when there is an opportunity. Instead of just sitting on something and then letting the opportunity pass by. So thank you.
This is right in line with what we talked about and that we wanted, we wanted to see sidewalks on close to schools as soon as possible. Work our way out. It just seemed like a logical thing. So this is a very ideal project in my opinion.
Counsel President?
Counselor Lasowski.
I move council direct staff to pursue the Southwest Maple School Zone Sidewalk Safety Improvements as presented.
Motion by, by Counselor Lasowski. Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Santiago. Any discussion? Counsel Pauling, I do still see your hand up, but. Was your, oh, nope, he's gone. Okay.
Thank you, Dave.
All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Counselor Pauling, do you approve of this? Just need an aye.
Yes, approved.
Great. Thank you so much. Opposed? Motion carries.
Just a quick piece of information before we conclude on this topic. Our paving projects have not been funded through any of the fuel taxes to date, other than a little bit over, we did a couple of years ago. We do have on the horizon.
Close.
Oh, sorry. Um, we do have on the horizon to do a bunch of paving in Northwest and, and then Dutch Canyon Road and things in the spring that will not be funded through any of the fuel tax. So fuel tax dollars are still going to sidewalks. Just an FYI.
And if you're not sure, just look for the yard sign that says. Made by your fuel tax. Perfect. Thank you. All right. Item number six, measure 109. We have our, um. Legal counsel, Peter Watts, who's going to address this. Um, Dick, are you going to kick us off or just straight to Peter?
I want to open it up, I think, and then.
Great, thank you.
So just for background, um. November 2020, at the general election, um. Measure went out to all the voters in the state to approve or disapprove the use of psilocybin also.
Shrooms.
Shrooms. Um, for medical purposes. And we just found out recently that the state solid, solidified its rules and we have a very short window in which. Municipalities can act if they so choose to limit the use of, uh, psilocybin in the community. Um, so the first thing on the staff report you'll notice is that, um, Columbia County and the city both did approve of measure 109. When it was passed in 2020. And so essentially what we have is we have this council meeting to decide if council wants to act because. You can place a measure on the ballot at a general election to essentially put a moratorium, a temporary moratorium on the use. Um, it has to be reauthorized every two years. So there's essentially three paths forward. First path is to do nothing. This would allow. Uh, psilocybin manufacturers and/or facilities to come in and, uh, operate under current development. You permitting, et cetera. Um, we could, uh, recommend an order, an ordinance to the voters to place a moratorium. Or the third option is we could not recommend an ordinance, but there are some very limited time, place and manner restrictions that we could delve into. Uh, for that option, we have a little more time. Um, those would have to be in place by December 1st in order to kind of enact with January 1st. When, um, permits could start being issued.
I think so. What is, would be a, you say moratorium?
Moratorium.
What would that be?
So essentially it would be an ordinance that would be passed by the voters. The voters would say they want to do this. And then what it would do is would prevent. The issuing of permits and development applications in the city for two years. For a psilocybin facility, whether that's manufacturer or administration. But it automatically expires every two years. So every two years.
Ballot.
Has to go back on the ballot, which means someone has to remember. And, you know. Have to go through the process again every two years.
And just to clarify, voters in Columbia County and in the city of Scapoo's approved this.
That is correct. Um. 15,765 voters in Columbia County approved it with yes, 15,425 no. The margin was greater in the city. 2,402 said yes, 2,041 said no.
We have any? Are there any communities in other states that have, that are doing this and have we heard?
No, we're, we're the first state to be doing this. Um, and from what we can tell. The response across the state to passing moratoriums, et cetera, is mixed.
So the question to us really is, is it since city voters pass this 2020 general election. By 2,402 yes votes versus 2,041 no votes, if we want to ask them again.
And every two years.
You either ask them again or not, either choose to ask them again. Not ask them again and just simply go with the state's rules, whatever that, whatever those may be. Or we can do some limited time, manner and place restrictions of our own in addition to. Whatever the state's going to put in. So that's the option.
Counselor Lasowski?
City manager Rains, I think you made a really, um. Profound statement at the end. The state has not adopted their rules completely in regards to this. So. Still kind of an on, it's still evolving. Yeah. I, I would say though, pointing out back that this was something that was brought to the voters' attention. Voters of Columbia County and within our, uh, Scapoo's district have identified that this is something that they approved upon. It is, uh, you know, I think redundant to take something back to the voters. That they've already indicated is something that they're in favor of. And so, um, at this point, I, I don't see any. I guess value in having this go back to our voters at this particular time. And so I would say that the city is already moving forward with what the state is outlining and is that information is provided to us, that we will fall within, uh. The guidelines of the state of the Oregon Health Authority as they oversee this particular program for the state and the citizens.
Why, since it hasn't been done before, why has this brought, brought, I mean, I guess, what would be the reason? Why, since it hasn't been done before, why has this brought, brought, I mean, I guess, what would be the reason to bring this ordinance?
For council?
Yeah, I mean, it's just.
Yeah.
Who was, who started?
Okay, so then, when this, I had.
Is this on? Just from before, I don't know.
I had totally forgotten that this had passed in 2020, just so much has gone on. And, um, about a month ago, we got this information, all the regs. Uh, and it was the first I had heard of it. And I, I went through these regs and frankly, I was, um, I was really surprised by what they said. Like, my understanding of this, when I remembered it, was that it was uh, physicians and mental health professionals providing this in a clinical setting. Uh, and the way that these regs are written is if you have 120 hours of training, you can do this. So it, it, you don't need to be a medical professional and it doesn't need to be in a clinical setting per se. I have also, so the, the alcohol regulations that went into effect that had strong preemptive language, preemptive language on, on local controls, um, became the model for the cannabis regulations that also had strong uh, preemptions of local controls, uh, which then became the model for these, which are the strongest preemption on local controls of any of them. The reason that the stepping back, the reason that those, that level of preemption was, the reason the Oregon Supreme Court accepted it for alcohol is because, if you buy, for instance, a bottle of Smirnoff, whether you're a hospital buying it for detox tremens treatment, whether you're a bar buying it to sell, or whether you are consumer that wants to consume in your home, paying the exact same price in every liquor store in the state of Oregon. And it's all completely regulated. It all goes through their warehouses. Um, and so the Oregon Supreme Court said that that uniformity in purchase price and uniformity at the time, this is just after prohibition, so, you know, 100 years ago, was important enough so that local jurisdictions would have their rights preempted, rights to tax and other things. None of the factors that were in that case were there with cannabis. I mean, medical is taxed differently than recreational. There's no uniformity in price. We don't even know with these, uh, psilocybin, which even is more, we're, we're less able to do any local controls. If you look at, um, ORS, ORS 475A, starting with 524 and going down, we're really able to do very, very little. And we have to take almost anything that we do to a voter, voter. So I almost read it like if we wanna do any regulations, we have to take those to a voter. If we wanna prohibit it, we have to take it, those to a voter. Um, I made a couple of calls actually to the Oregon Health Authority to see if I could get clarification regarding what the intent was because I was so stunned by this and, um, no. So, um, I, I believe they hired an outside contractor to do this. Um, I think that was someone involved in kind of the industry. Um, and these are written so that we really can't regulate. So I, I don't know how voters would react to a moratorium, understanding that at this point, I can't even really legally advise you on what sort of time, place, and manner restrictions we can do. As you guys are aware, once a license in a, uh, space opens, even if the state comes in later with other regs, it's a pre, or we come in with later regs, it's a pre-existing non-conforming use. So it becomes very difficult to do any regulations after the fact. I don't know enough about this issue to have any opinion on it or not. I've heard people say that it helps with PTSD and all sorts of things. Um, I don't know anything about it. I do know a lot about regulations and municipal code. And I have a lot of concerns with this statutory scheme that the state seems to adopt and, you know, our inability to, to regulate it. But these statutes internally are inconsistent. So one of the things that Alex and I and Isaac and I talked about is in some areas, it appears to say we have some ability to do things and then others, it kind of says the opposite. So it becomes really hard to know exactly what sort of regulations we can do.
I also wanna clarify, though, I think sort of back to your question, the reason why it's coming to you now is because if you had, say, wanted to refer it back to the voters or something like that, it would have to be on the ballot for November, which means that we'd essentially have to turn it in this month, the ballot measure to the state. Um, so that's why the timing, and since this information just came out recently, we realized we've kind of had a very, very limited window of time to even inform council of what was going on. So that's why we also looked at, you know, how the county voted, how the city voted, you know, how did voters really feel about this, which was that they passed it? And, and then again, you know, if, if there were time, place, manner, structure, or anything like that, they'd all have to be in place before January. Cause otherwise, come January, that's when we would begin, you know, issuing business licenses for these types of facilities where they to come to the city. So that's the reason behind the timing. Um, you know, yeah, we, we wish you, we could give you more information on what exactly the regulations are gonna be. Um, I think honestly, you know, there's still some element that the state is kind of working it out as they go. It's brand new.
That's the scary part, cause you don't know, right? And if you don't know, if, if Peter's confused, I'm sure most of us, Jim's saying, it's not clear, it's not.
Sure, there, yes, there is a lack, sure, there's a lack of clarity.
I doubt it that when, when the people voted, there, it was, it wasn't clear.
There, there were no rules written yet because we didn't know if it was going to pass.
They weren't voting on the rules. They were voting.
You weren't right. They weren't voting on the rules. They were just voting on, yes, we want this to be available or we don't.
Right.
That's normal. It's pretty normal.
Correct. That's what they do with marijuana as well. So.
Counsel McHugh, you're next.
Yeah, I, I read through the regulations and, uh, it just really seemed vague to me and, uh, I'm not even sure, how do they consume this product? Do you eat it? What do you do? Uh, I'm not sure. Uh, it, it says you have to consume it on site under a, uh, direction of a facilitator. Uh, so I don't, I guess, uh, I did vote for this at the time, but there wasn't much information. I felt anything we could do to improve mental health in our state, I'm all for. Uh, but it just seems to me, as I look at these regulations, it's very, uh, weakly regulated. And I don't know what that means. But Peter, do you have a recommendation on whether we should, we, you know, refer this to the voters or not?
I mean, I, it's going to be a real struggle just to describe what we're trying to, um, refer to voters and, and to give you an example of kind of some of the issues with it. If you look at ORS 75.530, it talks about, you know, reasonable limitations. Um, and, and what we can, what we can do and pass, and that's what we would pass before January. But then if you look to sections above to 524, it says that the provisions are designed to operate uniformly throughout the state in our paramount and superior to and fully replace and supersede any municipal uh, charter amendment or other local ordinance inconsistent with, with the provisions. So I don't know how we can have local provisions and that have those local provisions preempted. And, you know, those sections are right next to each other. I mean, it's not like ones at the beginning and ones that buried at the end and people got tired when they were reading it. There, there are two sentences, or excuse me, one sentence in between those two sections of the statute. So I, um, as I, what I defaulted to, I guess, is that, um, you know, the, the voters in the city did pass this. Uh, I mean, I, I really wish the Oregon Health Authority had put out these statutes in January. I really wish that we, they would delay the onset of this until we can get a full handle. Because it, to me, this was a cut and paste job that then went far further than the cannabis went. Um, giving us far less power. And I can't think of what emergency could possibly exist that would justify the state in doing preemptions of this. Though I don't like to make law, so I don't know that we want to be the ones that, that, you know, say, hey, what was your authority, um, for all of these local prohibitions? Cause we can, we can do reasonable regulations to anything, any other business, you know, and yet they're like, well, no, we're going to preempt all those. It's like, okay, on a, on something that's federally illegal, we're the, we are the outlier state. We're the only state that allows this.
So we're gonna move to Counselor Miller, Lasowski, and then Santiago. Miller?
So I think it's important to keep in mind that, you know, we make decisions based on what we think is best for the city and best for the city of our community, public safety, everything. The problem with this is, is that they're just like, uh, you know, saying is, you know, there's just limited information on the restrictions and there's just a lot of unknowns. Um, how do we preserve our rights as a city or, or options as a city in the best way possible so that if this does not turn out the way that we expected, we can do a regulation on it or whatever. I, I, that's the way I look at it. It's like how, I mean, it's pretty clear that the voters, I mean, the voters already voted on it. So, but there's a lot that the voters didn't know. There's a lot they don't know now. There's a lot we don't know. So what happens when something turns out the way that we didn't anticipate? How do we preserve our options so that we can, you know, do the best thing for the city? Even if it's very simple.
I, I just don't know how we would be able to efficiently inform voters about these because, I mean, we're talking about very technical regulations that seem to be designed to completely tie our hands. Um, I mean, we could, we could pass, uh, time, place, manner restrictions. We could make findings that those are reasonable. We could do it, we could do 1,000 feet from another facility, 1,000 feet from schools, 1,000 feet from churches. We could.
On that note, Peter, not to cut you off, this still falls within a controlled substance. So there's still other ORSs that come into play here, right?
Yeah, but they're, they attempt to preempt all those, these statutes.
So they can be within 1,000 feet of a school. It's usually all controlled. If you're 1,000 feet within, or you're within 1,000 feet of a school, possession usually becomes a felony.
The rulemaking committee still has to pose the rules for adoption. Am I correct, Peter?
My understanding is that these are the rules they propose for adoption.
To your point, it does prohibit them explicitly within 1,000 feet of a school.
Did you have any further?
I just don't know how we're expected to be able to make, even the public. I don't, I don't know how the public and the voters are expected to make any informed decision on here because there's nothing to inform them on. It's missing a lot of key information. So that's why I go back to, how do we best position the city to be able to do what's best for the city of Scappus, the community, should we need to? If that's, to me, that's the best thing that we can possibly do here, is just figure out how we position the city in the best.
So honestly, short of referring to the voters for a moratorium, I'd say we do time, place, manner restrictions and see if we get challenged, to be honest. I, I don't know what else, what else to do. Because otherwise, it just moves forward with what the state has. And unfortunately, this is the only information we have. Um, and they didn't give us very much time to work with.
I mean, I wanna respect what the voters decided, of course. But like in this case, um, it's very clear to me that there's not enough information. So how can you make an informed decision even to vote on it? So, you know, if, if our voters come back later and decide that's not what we intended by voting yes on this, how do we, how do we, that's right here. How do we protect our community? The way that our.
Well, I, I mean, and we keep in mind too, like, you know, like I said, pointed out, it's, um, even the way this is written, it makes it harder to keep a moratorium in place, right? Cause it expires every two years automatically unless you keep putting it back on the ballot.
That brings up a question. In two years, then, would we be able to go back out?
Yes.
Yeah.
In two years, it would expire. And then at that time, you could make some different decisions. But that's, again, this is only based on the idea that voters would vote to use a moratorium. They could say no.
Also, by not voting, you're not waiving the right to that either. So that, if, if you do nothing in two years, you could do something under this, I believe.
In, in two years.
Yeah. So if you do nothing and then you don't like it.
Do nothing, yeah.
You could make a referral. You could still do time, place, manner. I didn't, I mean, I'm not legal counsel, but I didn't say anything. I think I'm wrong, but.
The worst position that we'd be in is that we would be stuck with whatever we didn't think we didn't know about for two years.
Two years.
And I think you could probably do time, place, manner anytime.
I wanna confirm that that's correct, though. Peter, do you know, because you made a statement earlier about once something starts, it's harder.
Yeah, I mean, it's like.
It's harder to.
It's the, it's the reason why you see billboards on I-5, you know, because you can't do new ones, but all the ones that were up when that ban went into place were pre-existing non-conforming uses. And that's, that's the sort of thing you'll see, you know, in, under your city code. Once somebody's operating something in the zone, unless they abandon the use for a year and a day, it is a pre-existing non-conforming use and they can continue doing it. So, uh, I, I mean, we really need a legislative fix, to be honest with you. Um, because I've read through, I've read through this stuff twice and I just can't. I, I, I don't feel like I can even adequately inform you of exactly what.
Counsel Lasowski.
I, I think I would just highlight that if this were to go on the November ballot, it would be for a midterm election cycle. Thus, trends show that less people participate in a midterm election cycle. So therefore, a ballot initiative that was passed during a presidential election in 2020, where there's a higher number of turnout, I don't know if by giving this as a vote back to the voters that have already indicated that they want this to be passed in our community, um, is a fair reflection of the voters that will be participating. Now granted, I understand I do not have a crystal ball. I'm just going based on statistics that have been shown year over year. Again, I would just like to highlight that the voters have spoken. Thank you.
Counsel Santiago.
A couple of things. One is, I'm not sure, Peter, if, if you mentioned like somebody that has 120 hours of training, uh, is there something that we can put, like, be, as a city, it has to be a physician, you know, some medical doctor. We can't add any of, anything like that, right?
No, and, and it doesn't even really say what the training would be in. There's language about the establishment of the school, but it doesn't seem to, like, it doesn't necessarily need to be an accredited school or, it's just.
It will be a program, though, that is approved by the Oregon Health Authority. So therefore, there is a regulatory body that will oversee whatever that is, correct?
Yeah, part of the problem, though, is that with marijuana, that the marijuana tax was going into a fund. And so then the OLCC actually had funds in order to do a lot of the regulatory and other. This mentions that sort of fund, but it also doesn't mention any taxes. So I don't, they, I don't know how they're going to pay for it.
If we do nothing, something can come in and within the two years that we do nothing, right?
Right. I mean, I think that we could, as far as specifying what zone it's allowed to be in, I would if we've, if we pass a bunch of regulations and we make credible findings on why we believe that they are enforceable and other cities don't, if you're one of these, if you're one of these people that's trying to just quickly get licensed and in, in working.
You're not gonna.
They may, might not want like a multi-year legal battle over this weird intersection of land use and licensure and constitutional home rule and federal law. I mean, I wouldn't.
I'm in favor of, just to keep the conversation moving, I'm in favor of drafting out some restrictions. Um, not going back to the voters, but time, place, et cetera, having our own expectations.
I'm in favor of that also, and also, um, a limit on how many feet. So the, if, for example, if we have cheap, um, you know, rent space here comparatively, that I wouldn't wanna see a bunch of those facilities come in and overrun a certain small little area. That could be problematic. And like, we might also wanna think about, just like you're saying, every so many feet or whatever.
Can there be a limit of facilities?
I mean, we, we would, the limit, the way we would limit it is by only allowing in certain zones and by having 1,000 feet in between the facilities and 1,000 feet from parks and 1,000 feet from schools and.
I'd like as I'd like to focus on as many restrictions as possible while still allowing people access to what. Thank you. Oh, sorry, is there? Yeah, there is, I think.
We did ask for one.
Yeah.
We did ask.
There is. It would be option three. Oh, yes. On page 76, there's four options of motions.
So Counsel President.
Counsel Lasowski.
I move that staff bring back. I move that staff bring back options for reasonable regulations above and beyond ORS 457A at a later council meeting.
Motion made by Counselor Lasowski. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor. Let's go with Counselor Polling this time. Wait a chime in. Thank you. Any discussion?
One discussion point. I would just like to reiterate that the citizens of our community have already passed this. Thank you.
All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number seven, discuss hearing process for committee complaints. Legal Counsel Peter Watts.
Okay, so we had a complaint that was filed, I think it was last week. And then my understanding is there's been a second complaint that's filed that is related to the first. I have not yet had a chance to review it. But our, our goal would be, because it's been a long time since one of these has been processed, to just come up with kind of the parameters. So I had recommended two items. One is what lawyers call a hearing in RAM, and it really is just a hearing about a thing. And so what it would is what's contained within the four corners of the complaint. It could be something like a, you know, kind of a oral argument would be the best way to describe it, whether it's 10 minutes to the side or 15 minutes to the side. An opportunity for you as counselors to ask questions. It wouldn't be something where people would be bringing in outside evidence or witnesses. It would just be about the complaint filed and the, any attachments. The other would be basically a traditional hearing where it would be an opening statement, introduce, introduction of evidence, questioning of witnesses if there were any closing statements. And you guys with either one would need to decide whether there have been violation of, of your code and rules. And then in the event that that answers yes, whether that would merit what is being asked for, something in the alternative. If the answer is no, that there hasn't been a violation of your code, et cetera, then we wouldn't have to move on to that secondary thing because we would have found no violation. So, um, I think that the hearing in RAM is a lot less intimidating for people, lawyers and non-lawyers. Oral arguments a lot easier than fully questioning witnesses and everything. And, and also everyone would be on the same page as far as what was in front of you. So there wouldn't be any of those gotcha moments or surprises where someone would need delay or you guys needing to make rulings on whether to allow evidence because it was germane or not. So um, I think that that would, if we're, if we're looking at, at the pros and cons of both, in my mind, the pros and cons of that would be it is easier for people to understand and probably more fair. The benefits of a full hearing would be, I guess, this full vetting of any and all concerns, which is going to be far more time-consuming and staff-intensive than the, the other thing. But really, it's, your code is, is silent on the process. So it's up to you, whatever you want.
Counselor Miller?
Peter, I, so the question that immediately comes to mind is this is going to be based on, first, you have to make findings. Who from the city is going to basically pose the question of the findings? Basically, did so-and-so violate whatever rule? And then what happens when you get into a situation where whoever's hearing this, whether it be counsel or whatever, doesn't, like, it's, it's even, it's, it's. Hey, so first you have to have findings, right? Did it, did it happen or did it not happen? That's always the first question in every one of these things. And then there's the punishment. Basically, what, what happens after that? So what I'm asking is, number one, is who's going to draft the questions that are posed to the, the hearing committee or whatever you want to call it? What happens if there's still a question? You know, and then who's going to, I mean, what's the punishment and who decides on that? Like, I, I don't know. I just have some questions, like, in my mind of, to get everybody on the same page, otherwise it's going to be disorganized chaos rather than organized chaos, is there first needs to be a question to whoever is listening to the complaint about what the factual findings need to be. And then second needs to be whatever the disciplinary process is.
Right. And so I think in, in last, the, and, you know, but we would, we would give both the complainant and the person who's had the complaint against, we would give them both an opportunity to, you know, and hopefully they would be on the same page as to whether the emails in question were sent. And, you know, and then it's just a matter of, you know, there's, there's some language in your, your ordinance that, that talks about a certain level of conduct. And I think it would be up to you guys to, to decide whether a line had been crossed. I mean, it's possible that you guys would, some of you would disagree with others as, as far as something. And then if, if, if so, what, you know, what will be merited? In my mind, what's most important in these sort of things, sure, some of my least favorite things, just is that everybody feels like they've been treated fairly. That everybody sees the process that's transparent, where they've been heard. And to the extent that you have to establish expectations regarding, you know, how, that are outside of what are already in your team agreement and outside of what's already in your code, on how people like treat each other and interface with each other, that, you know, that, that those would be as clear and objective as possible.
That's, that's my point, is that are we looking to establish like a uniform way of dealing with these things? Or are we going to start doing these on a case-by-case basis? Because me, I would feel better if we had a actual formal procedure that we always follow because I don't want a situation where somebody feels like they're being treated differently through some sort of process. I would rather us have an adopted official process. It's unfortunate that we have to deal with this right now. This comes in front of us because this isn't the way that I would prefer to do this, but better late than never, right? We have to do it at some point, but I would much rather see a standardized process.
Counselor McHugh? Counselor McHugh?
Sorry. Sorry about that.
You're fine.
Are, are we, we are the group that you're talking about that be hearing this hearing. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So my thought is, you know, having dealt with numerous situations similar to this in my career, it, it, maybe that's too big of an audience to deal with this. I, I'm wondering if, if, for a first level of dealing it with it, if Isaac or Alex or both of them just sit down and talk with the two people involved and see if there's a, you know, some simple solution to this that doesn't have to come before the council and, you know, make it into the newspaper or whatever happens in that type of situation. I, I think maybe playing it down at the initial level is, is, is more wise than, than, than bringing it right to the council at this time. So I, I, I'm in favor of, you know, not making a mountain out of a molehill to, to make a molehill out of a mountain. So I'm wondering if that would be a more appropriate way to handle it.
Go with Alex and then.
Counselor McHugh, it does state in the code, actually, though, when there is complaints brought about, you know, the alleged behavior of a, a committee member, that that come directly to council. I, you know, I don't know that it would really maybe be the most appropriate thing for staff to take that over. And like I said, it does state in the code that this is something that council is supposed to handle.
Just follow up that, if I may. Is it, does it have to be the whole council or it could be representatives of the council?
I, I think it would, yeah, it says the council, so I think it would be all of you.
And then Pete, when we, you know, have consent agendas where things are placed in front of us, adding committee members to committees, we vote as a body that those people are assigned to those committees. So we are the deciders that they are on it and that they stay on it or if they're removed.
Well, yeah, it's, yeah, we decide, the, the mayor appoints them and then we confirm his appointments, right?
Yes, it is approved by council.
Yeah, yeah. But I mean, nobody's ever asked me who's going to be on these committees. It's just kind of handed to us and we approve what the mayor has recommended.
Yes, but you don't have to.
Yeah. No, I agree. I just want to, would like to make it less instead of more. That's my point. And I don't know how to do that, I guess. But if there's a way to do that, that's be, what I'd be in favor of.
Counselor Lasowski?
Uh, yes, Peter, I would be curious to know what liabilities the city should be aware of in regards to harassment, discrimination, or other, I guess, other actions that could be pushed back against the, the committee creating a hostile environment for our volunteers.
Well, no one, no one has alleged any wrongdoing by any city employees or, or by the city. And so what I think is that we have a code. I wish it were more fully formed as far as what this process looked like. I think that would benefit everyone. I tend to agree with Counselor Miller's point, having uniformities so that everybody has an expectation, understanding that if there were extraordinary circumstances, then maybe that would need to be deviated from. But hopefully, we would receive very few of these sort of formal complaints and, and we wouldn't have to utilize this. So I, I think as long as, as we are within a plausible interpretation of the code, which is a hearing conducted by the city council with rules that everyone understands, you have very little liability. You know, you have pretty broad sovereign immunity in, in almost all things. And, and this would be one of them. And again, the city staff at times were opied on emails, but they weren't sent to the city staff. And, you know, we don't know if, it's not, I think it's not unusual for two members of a board to communicate. Our advice is, we don't want a quorum of a committee communicating because it might seem like they're arriving at a decision. But I, you know, I've served in a lot of committees myself and I've sent emails to other committee members too. So I think that is, as long as we have a fair process, then our liability is minimal.
We're going to go with Counselor Santiago and then Polling. And then Miller? Okay. Counselor Santiago?
Well, I think that I have been part of these committees. And in the committees, we sign an agreement that we, we follow. We are going to be respectful to each other. I, I believe all committees have, the ones that I've been in have it. So we, if as members of a committee, sign it, agree to it, like anything, right? If you sign something and then you don't lie by what you signed, and that alone gives, I guess that the process would be, if you violate whatever you sign the contract, then, right, you, you're out, you're out. That's what you're meaning, that's what it, to me, it sounds like when, if I violated, violated what was in the agreement that I signed, I know myself by signing that if I violate, then I, consequence.
But we have to find that, yeah.
Right. Yeah. So the question is, to, to the extent that there, to what occurred, occurred, you know, does that, you guys would need to make findings that that did in fact violate the agreements. And then the question would be, do those violations rise to the level of X? You know, would it rise to the level of removal? Would it rise to the level of, you know, some sort of strike policy? I, I don't know. And only you guys would know and, and you'd have, you know, very broad discretion in making both of those findings.
Counsel Polling?
I just want to go back to kind of what Pete said, you know, with the, with the less council members, you know, I, I think I understand where he's coming from. However, I do think that having a full council gives you less likelihood of bias by one or two council members. And that way you actually have a full spectrum so that there's, it's as fair a process as possible.
Counselor Miller?
So I have two concerns. One is, you know, we have these committees to serve city of Scap, city of Scappus and the community. And so now we have an issue of disruption, right? And we want all of our committees to work cohesively and really well together collaboratively and everything. So we have that issue that we need to think about. So it's, it's how, how do we, it becomes an issue too, how do we be fair to everybody and also quickly resolve this so we can get back on track and do what we're here to do? So there's that piece of it. But also as we, as we move forward and try to make a formalized process in handling these things in the future, you know, maybe there is something to Counselor McHugh's point that we can introduce, like, you know, maybe two parties can agree to like a third-party mediator. We can offer that to them and either one of them can say no and we just move to the next step. But, you know, that, it's, it is putting, you know, that buffer in there so that if they want to do that, they have that option. And I'm not saying that's the answer. I'm just saying that maybe it's something that we should consider. But ultimately, I do agree with what's been said here is that it does need to be all of council too because I don't want one or two people or three people being accused of bias or whatever. I think it does need to be all of council. Thank you.
Just my couple of thoughts are, have already been said in front of council. I'd like to go with the less intimidating approach, opening statements, et cetera. I would like to, again, as Counselor Santiago has said and Counselor Lasowski, et cetera, these are people that are volunteering to represent the city and, and function on behalf of us. And that comes with responsibility. And so whereas, you know, we want to keep people's, you know, matters out of the public, they volunteered to, to do the job. And that just kind of comes with it, unfortunately. Their public, you know, people can attend the committee meetings we have. They're publicized. Some are even recorded, like, it's not really a secret what's happening. Unfortunately, maybe some of these interactions are happening behind closed doors and that's what we have to be finding or figuring out. Would you say, I mean, hopefully this doesn't happen all the time or become more frequent, but that these committees that are having these issues or filing complaints, there are some protocol that those meetings stop until the problem is resolved? Or that those members who have either filed complaints or have been complained upon cannot attend meetings until, you know, we've figured this out? Because it would just, for me, I don't think it's productive to the committee, to the group. If these things are happening, complaints are being made, and then they're supposed to function together in a, in a setting with other committee members, that doesn't seem healthy to me. So I just am not sure, yeah, it's sad to say like, well, this committee work needs to be on pause until this is resolved. Or is it kind of like, those members need to take a break until it's resolved? I, I don't know because I think it's, it's, I don't want to say it's not, I don't want to say it's toxic, but it's not, I don't think it's healthy for that group function when these outside matters are happening.
My experience is that complaints lead to more complaints. We have, you, of course, are the city council. You're duly elected and you, you, when you meet is specified. Your budget committee meets a couple of months out of the year and then basically is in furlough for close to eight months. Your planning commission, due to our Oregon land use laws and the 180-day rule and other things, they meet on an as-needed basis when there are applications in front of them. The other standing committees were set up to provide some expert, outside expertise in, in ways that were intended to benefit the city. So both the Parks Committee to look at some specific stuff and then this Economic Development Committee. You know, whether or not they need to meet every month, it really, you know, what's on their agenda. It's kind of like the planning commission and the budget committee. If, if there's, if there's things on their agenda that are time-sensitive, then maybe we wouldn't them, want them to pause if, if there aren't. And there's probably not a reason for them to meet. I don't know during the ongoing dispute. I'm sure that different people on the committee are aware of these things, probably have different feelings. And it might make sense to press pause on standing committees until you need them. And that's how I've seen other jurisdictions use them, is they don't meet monthly. They meet at, on an ad hoc basis when you guys are like, boy, we need that Parks Committee. Or we have this outside employer that's. Or we have this outside employer that's looking at us. We have this project that we want, let's ask this committee to meet. That's usually how I've seen these committees work, rather than a monthly staffed meeting where kind of staff is coming up with the priorities. That's, in at least in my experience, unusual.
So in my personal opinion, I would request that this committee stop meeting and push pause until this has come before council. But that's my personal opinion. I don't know if that's a decision that staff makes. I, I think that they attend the meeting and they're there, so.
Is there, is there anything, is there anything political this committee is faced with right now?
I haven't, I mean.
Committee is, we're not talking about Parks though, economic development, um, you know, remember.
The only item on the agenda currently is for them to start reviewing some information about the decorative street poles in downtown on this side. Um, after that, we would be probably deferring to what they call updates, where they kind of go around and talk about what's happening in various sectors. I have not talked to the chair yet, typically that'll happen this week or next.
If there's nothing time sensitive, that's the first question.
So Lasowski.
I would say, do we have the authority to, at this particular point, to put those committees on pause if that's what we choose to do?
Yeah, I mean, I think those committees serve at your pleasure. I mean, these aren't official, these are official because we've made them, but there's not.
There's no charter rules or uh, steps that we need to ensure.
Right, like if you're, if you put your budget committee on pause before your budget was due, we, we would be having a rank conversation. But um, this, this is not that sort of committee where they have to do something by state law.
So I, I, I too would be in support of putting this committee on pause based on the nature of the information that has been provided at this time.
I agree as well.
So I think we do need a motion on the process that we would like to use in terms of presenting findings to council and the manner in which that's done.
Council President, as part of that, can you um, let us know if this is something you would want to do in a separate or special meeting as opposed to a, you know, as opposed to a regularly scheduled meeting? Do you want to schedule another time for this, maybe just an hour? You know, uh, right, didn't we discuss that?
Right, so my recommendation, if, if I think all of you have specified you'd rather do a hearing in REM, would be, we do it like a lubricase, which is fifteen minutes to a side. People are able to reserve, you know, people might use eight minutes and reserve seven for rebuttal. It would give both people an opportunity to be heard and then to the extent they wanted to rebut, they could rebut. And if we wanted to do questions during it, that could happen. Uh, or if you wanted to do questions after it, that could happen. Hopefully, the whole process will be kept um, less than, you know, forty minutes. It's just easier on people.
If that's a decision that I make, are you looking for?
I'm just looking for council consensus and then I'll kind of write the rule.
In my opinion, I'd like it to be a separate meeting um, away from a scheduled council meeting.
Is, is there any exemptions or anything that come into play here with public meetings?
It would be a public meeting because it is a, because a quorum of the city council's meeting.
And it would be recorded.
Right.
Yes. Counselor Polling or McHugh, do you have any opinions?
No, I agree with the consensus so far that we would have it as a REM meeting uh, at a separate occasion.
It, it looks like that's really our only option. I would still like to play it down if we could, but looks like we don't really have the ability to do that. And so uh, I, I think putting the, the committee on pause and then until we've resolved this is probably the best way to go.
Counselor Lasowski.
Yeah, committee with REM.
And in a separate.
In a separate meeting on uh, or a special meeting outside a, uh, outside of a regularly scheduled council uh, meeting.
Counselor Santiago. Second. Okay, so it sounds like everybody's in agreement of that. How much time do we give the parties? Or how long do we wait for complaints to come in? Or how long do we wait to schedule this?
Oh, I, I think we, we, we had the second complaint come in sometime between when I left my office and when I arrived. So I haven't had a chance to review it yet. Um, to the extent that the other party wanted to, I mean, we want, we just want to make sure that they both have the same.
Yeah.
Um, so if they want to submit something and then, you know, all of that would be, I guess allegations have been made against both. Um, all that evidence could be heard in, in one proceeding and and we just want to keep it as civil as possible. It would not take me longer to write the rules.
It would be a calendar check between us, well, it would be a calendar check between you and the, the two parties. Okay?
Oh, and then just one point of clarification, um, the, for pausing EDC meetings, I wasn't sure if we actually had everyone just.
I believe we were in consensus for that.
The only thing that I would ask is before the hearing, if you have a set of questions or parameters from maybe legal counsel, that are all we need to find, so that everybody is on the same page.
Right.
Moving forward, if everybody, I just see this being completely disorganized and it being a huge problem if we're not on the same pool of points.
So we need to, you mean, you mean you'd like to come up with outcome A, B, or C ahead of time?
So, so legal counsel would basically say, based on the city's rule, or the team agreement or whatever, these are the, these are the things they agreed to, so therefore, that's the findings.
Yes.
So we're all very clear on what the findings were and what that agreement said or what the rules are that are alleged to have been broken.
And we would need the parties to understand that in advance of the meeting as well, in order to have the most fair outcome that we could have.
Exactly, yeah, because they need to tailor their arguments.
Correct.
Counselor Lasowski.
How will we determine the outcome? Is there going to be steps? Is it open discussion and determination by council through debate?
I think it's a discussion.
Yeah, I think it would be a discussion and then, you know, you're kind of like Court of Appeals or something.
Right.
There's seven of you and, and whatever four of you think it's, is.
So like in the future, if we do draft rules for addressing these particular issues as they're brought and formalized, uh, brought to our attention, um, do we, like a zero tolerance rule would, could potentially be incorporated into that rule setting?
Yeah, if that's the standard you'd want in order to clarify what sort of behavior would, needs to be avoided by members then, and um, uh, you, you do that. I mean, are, part of the, part of the problem with coming up with standards is that if we're trying to write all the things that someone can't do, you know, it's like, all right, well, versus the way that they're drafted now is kind of, uh, our hope would be, it would be a kind of mutual respect. It's, it's how everything's set up is, is that we want a culture of mutual respect.
Just a second, Counselor Miller.
A second, um, Council President Grayson, I move that council extends the meeting past nine o'clock.
Motion made by Counselor Miller, is there a second?
Second.
Again, by Counselor Lasowski. Counselor Santiago.
So what, um, so what you're saying, Peter, is that, for example, if we come up with a process saying the outcome would be um, not just dismissal of the individual, a member of the group, but would say this individual is no longer able to serve in any other committees? I mean, that kind of stuff that, right, or do we give a timeline? Is that the process that we're talking about?
I mean, if that's the process that you guys would, would want to, want to do, that's the sort of thing you could do. I mean, there could be removal, um, there could be, you can't bind a future city council. So if, if you were looking, if there was some duration, that doesn't mean that a future city council couldn't appoint somebody to a committee. Um, but outside of that limitation, I mean, we're all as your oyster. You really, your code really doesn't specify much of anything.
Counselor Miller.
A suggestion for right now, I think that we just need to focus on process and making the findings. And then I think that um, the um, recourse basically, or I hate to call it the disciplinary side, um, but that is what it is. Um, that I think can be more of a conversation of what collectively everybody believes is fair. But I think to even get to that point, we need to first have factual findings on if these things occurred.
So are you thinking like a couple of weeks, a month, two months, like how long does it take?
All, all, the only delay is, is going to be giving the original complaint an opportunity to.
Sure.
Um, and, you know, I think just very simple rules, um, fifteen minutes to a side. Um, and then I pull that, the specific language out of your code in the team agreement as far as the expectations, so that you can make findings whether there's a violation of that or not. And Alex and I have gone over that. I think there's a sentence or two in the code that addresses it. And then there are a couple of points on the, on the team agreement.
Counselor Lasowski.
Will we allow for remote uh, attendance to this or do they have to attend in person?
Absolutely, remote would be allowed because one of the, one of the people has, has stated that they are medically compromised and they can't attend in person. So um, if we did not allow that, that, then we would really have a problem, the state of Oregon, actually.
It's president.
Yes, um, Counselor McHugh. Your hand is raised.
Yeah, I, I see that.
Okay.
Uh, you know, I, I still concerned that we're making a way bigger deal out of this than what needs to be done. I don't know if there's any alternative to that, apparently there's not. Uh, but it just seems to me that if we bring them into a, a, you know, a hearing and they, you know, nobody's going to want to complain. Well, don't complain to the city council because uh, they're going to make you come to a hearing and you have to testify. You know, thi- this does not seem to be to that degree of a problem. And uh, my thought is that, you know, if there's a way we can avoid doing a hearing uh, and just take care of it, someone sit down and talk with the two people and see if it can be resolved. Uh, and if that isn't done, then maybe we have to come to a hearing. But uh, I just think we're, we're uh, you know, we're, we're giving far more attention to this than what needs to be given at this time. And I think we're going to end up causing more problems down the line than we're solving.
So we receive email complaints all the time. And what we say to those people is if there's a formal process that can be utilized, but you need to file a formal complaint in order to trigger that. And this is, this is the time when the person who was informed of that process decided that that's what they wanted to. That's the road they decided to go down. Um, so.
Whereas others maybe decided to sit down with the person or seek.
Or just didn't want to go through the process, you know, like wanted to alert us that that's some concerns. And, you know, there have been times where the liaisons on those committees have had a conversation with someone and, and that was enough to resolve it.
I know that, yeah, there's council liaisons, the mayor.
Right.
Um, so there have been in other situations where they don't choose to file a complaint. There are methods.
Right.
And, and, and individuals that can help support.
The other thing I'd add too is that in this specific instance, because of the nature of the complaint, and I believe the remedy being sought, that's not something that staff could decide or have any control over. That has to be a decision of council. So we couldn't really address the situation anyway on a staff level.
So it's looking to me like we still need a motion officially on the process we'd like to use?
Oh, right, so we'd be, so it, just from my notes, um, hearing that, you know, you wanted to do the hearing in REM, pause the EDC meetings temporarily, and then have this held at a separate or special meeting. I'm just looking at the calendar, you know, I don't know what your availability is, but something like um, September twelfth would be first Monday after your first meeting in September. So I don't know if that would work for everybody, but that's just something I'm tossing out there. Um, and then it, Peter and I would, um, really Peter primarily would help you prepare um, any kind of questions or documents you would need for the actual hearing in and of itself. Um, and once it's complete, you know, and I could, and Peter could always circle back and we could try to clarify the code for the future, just so that we don't have to do this exact process again.
Give me.
He's got it all ready.
Give me a second. This is a mouthful.
Hearing in REM? Okay. Madam Council President.
Counselor Lasowski.
I move that council place a temporary pause on the Economic Development Committee from meeting and that legal counsel prepare a hearing in REM to identify a formal complaint and that that meeting be scheduled outside a current city council meeting.
I have a second, motion made by Counselor Lasowski. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Santiago. Any discussion? All those in favor state by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, I think we're on to calendar. Hang on, all right. Unfortunately, we had a power outage last week, so we are having our one-time city council meeting today uh, for the month. Um, we have tomorrow the fifty-year stakeholder advisory committee meeting at six P M. Every Friday remaining in August, we have movies in the park held outside here at Heritage Park. Those events start at seven, um, and then movies following at dusk. Every Saturday continuing through August, Scappus Farmers Market from nine A M. to two. We are canceling the Economic Development Committee meeting on Thursday, August eighteenth at noon. But there is a Parks and Rec Committee meeting at six P M. Planning Commission meeting on Thursday, the twenty-fifth at seven P M. And another fifty-year stakeholder advisory committee meeting at six P M. on August thirtieth. City Manager Rains.
Nothing for me this evening, thank you.
Any staff members present that would like to give an update? Counselor Polling, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Yeah, I just wanted to say uh, that I've recognized that there's uh, been a lot of work been put in by staff uh, trying to get all the events out. Uh, and I, I, I've seen it everywhere, the movies uh, at the park have been, uh, they had that first movie this last weekend and it, well, my daughter went, she said it was awesome. Uh, and that's, you all the signs and I just want to say thank you and good job. Uh, the, the work is greatly appreciated. That's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor McHugh.
Yeah, I just like to say the, kind of the same thing. I've just seen a lot of advertisements around about our, our adventure festival and uh, and, and other things. And the billboard going out of town looks great. I went through uh, Isaac's uh, report on uh, what he's done and Treadway have done. I was very impressed with what I saw. I looked at the uh, the, the ads that they've been doing and the links that he gave us there. And I was just very impressed with what's going on. Uh, did seem to be there's a little bit of a concern, they're not getting enough uh, uh, you know, contributions from the community. And uh, and Isaac, if I can help with that, let me know. Uh, because there might be some people that I know to contact that haven't been contacted, I'm not sure. But you could, uh, if I can help, just let me know. Anyway, all looks good there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Lasowski.
Uh, yeah, I had the opportunity to uh, go to the Omic tour earlier this week. It's exciting to see that uh, the second building is uh, in construction and that there is a potential for a third building on the site. Uh, it's always great to see that that is continuing to move forward. Also, uh, Dave, out to shout out to your team, seeing them out there striping and uh, hitting up the paint at the intersections for the crosswalks, fantastic. It, it really, it really pops and people, and for safety, right? This is uh, preparing for school starting, what, less than a month from now? So uh, really appreciate that and uh, it's a tip of the hat to all of staff. Um, you know, I, I, I reached out to City Manager Rains this week and uh, earlier this week. And, you know, it's just great to hear some of the things of, you know, new businesses that are coming to Scappus that we have, you know, potential for uh, new business startups. And then that there's also, you know, potential for additional restaurant uh, or food choices for our community members. So lots and lots of great things going on. We do have Adventure Fest coming up in uh, September, which will be great. And so there's uh, lots of, lots of great things that are going on in this community. Thank you.
I'm so sorry, I skipped council, I went from the screen to my right. Counselor Miller? I'm so sorry. No, I am so sorry.
There's no, uh, there's no set.
Just space.
Um, so. Um, so I'll, I'll keep this short. Um, first, I just want to echo everything that has been counselled. But thank you. Great job everybody's doing. Um, next, uh, just reminder that the Amani Center fundraiser event is Saturday, uh, September 17th at the Grabhorn Farm. Tickets are now on sale. If you're not familiar with the Amani Center, um, it's a very important asset to this community. It's the, um, Child Abuse Assessment Center that law enforcement investigators throughout Columbia County, um, rely on to make cases against, um, those that victimize children. So it's a, it's a very, very important asset to our community. As everybody here knows, um, we don't have the law enforcement resources, um, you know, just because of our size and another thing. So the, um, to be able to do those types of investigations, specialized investigations like that. For example, you know, one of my friends is a detective for Edmunds PD in Washington, and that's all she does is, uh, child abuse investigations. Don't have the luxury of having something like that. So the Amani Center, um, you know, really, it's a very critical part of this county's, um, ability to hold those accountable who victimize children. So again, um, just, uh, if you can, um, you know, try to buy the tickets. It's again, on Saturday, that's September 17th at the Grabhorn Farm. It looks like it's going to be a really, uh, great event. Um, last is just a short update on 911. There's really not a lot here to talk about because they did cancel both the advisory committee meeting and the Board of Directors meeting for July. The next meeting they just posted is going to be, it looks like on August 25th at 9:00 AM at the 911 facility. So again, um, same message that I always have is just, you know, solidarity, our numbers and, um, messaging that, uh, the services that they provide are critical to the safety of our public and our first responders. And I, I've just really set on keeping that message consistent and, um, trying to get, uh, everybody that we can to go and keep that same message and the pressure on for them to fix the problems with the current radio system. And also, um, be very accountable with what they're trying to do with the next radio system. And on that note, um, Chief Legall and I have met with, um, a couple of the public safety chiefs throughout the county. And, um, he's been excellent to work with, you know, he's a new chief, so a, a lot of us haven't had that much opportunity to work with him, but I just want to say that he's been excellent in reaching out to, um, the other chiefs within the, uh, Columbia County area of public safety and, um, uh, informing them and educating them on what it is that City of Scappus was and is trying to do. And on that note, um, the free engineering that we are getting, um, did start about two weeks ago and it's, um, it's, uh, going really well. So, and they're trying to get that done within about two to three months. So that'll be a really good piece of additional information that we are hoping to share with everybody and more information is better, right? So, and that's what we're trying to do is get more, um, professional information out there for, um, these public safety chiefs and the, the decision makers, the stakeholders to be able to consider and make the best decision for not only public safety, but for our taxpayers as well. Um, so again, um, if you can, I'm going to keep, uh, letting the council know on when those meetings are. So if you can join, um, definitely please do. Thank you.
Counsel Santiago, sorry about that.
No, it's okay. Fact that you're, um, last, everything has been said, so that's a good thing. So I also attended the Omic. It was great. It's exciting because they're building a, a third building and it's just, uh, more economic development. So that's exciting. And Dave gave a great presentation in the Parker Rec, so I have nothing to add to that. I do, I just want, correct me if I'm wrong, just out there, I did see the, um, the Apartment Candles website come up. Has anybody looked up how much they, those apartments cost? And it was just astonishing for me, but, um, because my son's looking for a place. And it was a 444 square foot, uh, one bedroom, one bath, $1,700. So I'm not sure, I was, I don't recall, you know, they were going to be that expensive, but anywhere, 444 square feet. So if I'm wrong, please tell me I'm wrong, but that's just like mind blowing. Especially here in Scappus. So, and next to the Verbo tracks, so. But other than that, uh, great job, you guys' staff. You guys are amazing. Um, Dave, wish we had more money. More personnel. Um, right, we're trying, but, um, that's it. That's all I have.
Um, we only have one council meeting and it's, uh, before Adventure Fest and it's literally the week of Adventure Fest. So, um, I appreciate Counsel McHugh kind of putting an all call out there for, I know we've had a lot of people making personal phone calls and getting donations. So thank you to those people that have been doing that with local businesses and organizations, but, um, spreading the word that, you know, we are relying on a lot of sponsorship to continue this event and make it an annual event, um, for our community. Um, and hopefully everyone will be there or sign up for the Run With Neil or Walk It.
Yeah, I'm not working.
Oh, that's true. Yeah, I'm there. Um, I am very excited that tomorrow, the, oh, today's only Monday. Wednesday, two more days. The survey, um, that went out to our community, mainly our school-aged community about, um, YMCA after-school childcare, that'll close on Wednesday. And we've had hundreds of people fill out the survey. And, um, just even tonight, I know that the superintendent had mentioned at their board meeting, 196 people said that their families, yes, this is something that they would want to commit to even at that price point. So I'm really hopeful that YMCA is something that, um, is here to stay in Scappus for a while, not just with the after-school program, but with other programs as well. I've got, see you in September. Oh, yep. Meeting adjourned. Counsel